Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please co-roll?
Chairperson Carroll, absent. Vice Chair Young?
Here.
Secretary Treasurer Hatt?
Here.
Mayor Morrow?
Here.
Councilmember Gerbaugh?
Here.
Staff Rep Cole? Commission Member Beardsley?
Here.
Commission Member Bosdick?
Here.
And Commission Member Troyka?
Here.
Staff present tonight is Community Development Director Harrington and Deputy Clerk Ritchie. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended or distributed?
I'd like to move as amended, and I would like to make amended an amendment to discuss planning commission representative representation to ZBA and code review committee at the end of the meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 28th, 2022, as amended or submitted?
Move to approve as submitted, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Public comment: Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments. The person is requested but not required to state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person.
Ben Goodman, Western Side of Town. I'm just here to notice you guys about the sidewalk in front of where Mickey's used to be, where you're putting a dispensary, or they're putting a dispensary. Last week, I understand there was some issue with the water, but the sidewalk quality after they were done with it is absolutely deplorable. We had people in my neighborhood who are elderly that couldn't get up and down the sidewalk because there's mud cakes everywhere, it smells over there. Additionally, there's people that run up and down that sidewalk for exercise. They said it's not the typical standards that we have here in Saline, as well as families walking to parks. We want to make sure this doesn't happen again, and they need to be held accountable for this or fined. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Item 22-24, application from Ramiro Bari of A&amp;M and BH Industries LLC for a special land use in the C3 district from Appendix A, Article 4, Section 4.0413R, sorry, B-13, for an adult-use marijuana retailer and preliminary site plan remodeling the existing 1,350-square-foot building and adding 21 parking spaces at 751 West Michigan Avenue, Saline, Michigan, 48176, parcel number 18-18-01-325-007. First, we have a memo dated October 6th from Community Development Director Harrington.
Yeah, so—
Madam Chair, before—I'm just recused to this matter, so I want the record to reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so before I begin tonight, Planner Auerbach, Mike Auerbach, is actually at the Michigan Association of Planners Conference in Mackinac Island this evening. He offered to zoom in, but I did not think it was necessary, so hopefully I can field whatever questions you have in an efficient and timely manner. But with that being said, I will begin doing the presentation model that we've since adopted. So the proposal, as you mentioned, is action item 22-24. It's a preliminary site plan, special land use for 751 West Michigan Avenue for A.M. and B.H. Industries. The location is the former Mickey's Ice Cream location, as I'm sure you're all familiar with. At this point, it's the south side of West Michigan Avenue, and the property is Zone C3. The request is, as I mentioned, a special land use for an adult-use marijuana retailer. The Planning Commission, as you're familiar with, recommends approval to the city council, as well as the Planning Commission is reviewing their preliminary site plan. You review it in a very preliminary and conceptual stage. You ask and you make conditions before the final site plan, at which point that would be a more binding and cementing agreement. It's formerly home—the current property is formerly home to Mickey's Ice Cream, as I mentioned. It's a 1,350-square-foot building. The home on the site will also be torn down, as well as that curb cut removed. It was built in 1951. So to go over the seven special land use requirements, I will only do this once this evening to save us all some time. The first requirement is that it is harmonious and in accordance with the general objectives of any specific objectives of the master plan. It will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity and will not change the essential character of the area. Three, it will not be hazardous or disturbing to any existing abutting in nearby uses or uses reasonably anticipated in the future. It will be an improvement in relation to property in the immediate vicinity and the vicinity as a whole. It will be served adequately by essential public services and facilities that the persons responsible for the establishment or the proposed use will provide adequately any such service or facility. Six, it will not create excessive additional public costs. It will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the city. And lastly, seven, will be consistent with the intent and purpose of this ordinance and comply with all specific standards which are established for said use by this ordinance. So going off of Planner Auerbach's memo that he submitted to the city, as well as the memo I wrote, we found that items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 were in compliance. The only issue had to do with number two, will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity and will not change the essential character of the area. Carlisle Wartman wanted to clarify, as far as operational aspects, that the applicant should confirm the number of employees that will be present at a peak shift. For preliminary site plan requirements, as I mentioned, you approve with or without conditions, and it's based on the purposes, objectives, and requirements of the city's Saline ordinances and standard specifications, looking at things like area width, natural resources impacted, building location, and site arrangement, parking and loading, site access and circulation, safety paths, landscaping, lighting, signs, floor plans, and elevation. So a real comprehensive review. Out of those items, Planner Auerbach identified three that I concurred with. So safety pass, we would like the applicant to consider a curved sidewalk with ramps around the building and offsetting the proposed walkway connection to the Michigan Avenue sidewalk from the access drive. Next, signs, we would like the applicant to submit a more formal sign plan for their final site plan submission, which I believe they already have. And then for, and plan elevation, the applicant should provide elevation plan for the final site plan submission, which I also believe they have. So it is my recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the special land use to the city council if the applicant can sufficiently address how many employees they reasonably anticipate at a peak shift. And then second, it is also my recommendation that Planning Commission approve the preliminary site plan for adult-use retail for A.M. and B.H. Industries with the conditions enumerated in my report.
Thank you. Would you—that obviously took care of your report and Mr. Auerbach's report. Is there anything that you'd like to address with the memo from City Engineer Humphreys dated October 4th, 2022?
None at this time. Likely, the site plan will have to be modified slightly more, depending on more thorough engineering reviews from our consultant at OHM.
Great, thank you.
With this one here?
Yeah.
Yep, Ben, for future presentations, can we also—okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Have it illuminated on the screen to my left, excuse me.
Time to ask questions to you, Mr. Harrington. Of course, you and I have had discussions, and I've been watching this entire site in terms of not only the eyesore that is now that house, that has been a dangerous structure. Just last week, there was digging that was done, it damaged a water line and required, and now just tonight, we've had more concerns going on. This hasn't even gotten to a final site plan stage, and so the preliminary site, what's been done on that, appears to be really-nilly. Trying to figure out what's happening. I have a concern of moving forward on an adult use when the medical dispensary hasn't even been accomplished and met.
Right, so there are a few points there. So after further consultation with our city attorney, Anthony Chubb, essentially, they can provide and they can acquire a demolition permit, and this is true for anyone going through the site plan and special land use process. So as a owner, it is your right to destroy whatever you want on your property, so long as it's properly permitted and regulated by entities like Eagle, as well as the city, and whatever watershed or erosionary consequences that might be related to the county. So that they have the right to begin the demolition with or without Planning Commission or city council approval, so long as it follows those regulations set forth by the state. The next item would be for the parking lot as well. It is—anyone can repave their driveway at any time, for whatever reason they so choose, so long as, once again, it follows not only the city's regulations, but the state building code, amongst other things. So they've begun that process, and it's actually entirely independent of their site plan process. It is a by right allowance. As for—if we should put things on hold, they're not currently operating the medical facility. They haven't actually sent out the final site plan for that medical facility yet. So it's of my opinion that it's not necessarily worth postponing this further until they accomplish those tasks, as they're actively working to accomplish those tasks. I believe they've already pulled the demolition permit for the house, but I believe the applicant could maybe speak to some of the concerns addressed with that.
And that is my concern, is what is happening. It seems like the house has been—has not had a look at it for well over a month or two months. There's code enforcement concerns and issues on that property. Can we make those conditions, whether it will be approved tonight?
That they remove the house? Yes, you could add that again as another condition. As for the code enforcement concerns, I think if they're in a process of demolition and have been delayed by another entity such as Eagle or the state, which I may believe be the case, but I would let the applicant speak to that, then it's not really incumbent upon us to give them a code infraction if they're actively trying to complete the aspect of the permit, which is usually the barrier we have when we're issuing courtesy notices and then moving into the civil infraction process. We're making sure that they're continuing on the process of achieving compliance.
And proper safety and protocols are put in place so that trespassing or whatever would endanger a citizen in our community?
Right, and yes, that would be a reason to essentially create a code enforcement case against the property owner.
Well, I guess the applicant will be speaking in a moment, so we'll wait to have that addressed. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I have another question.
Oh, sorry.
You list four nonconformities with the existing site plan. How many are we left with with the proposed site plan? We would hope we would be making progress. I think there's one that's gone. Can't tell about the other three.
Sorry, to which nonconformities?
So we have one access point per lot, offset from adjacent drives, offset from opposite side of street, same side of street, and spacing from intersections, all existing nonconformities. There's a redesign of the drive to go from two to one. Are any of these other things being addressed?
Well, they would have to be, because they're not applying for variance. So when they're totally remodeling the site, so for our rule of 50% or more change to a structure that is existing or site that's nonconforming, it would require to bring in compliance to the site. So for example, the number of curb cuts is being—or the access points is being limited. That will definitely be something that would be brought on the final site plan consideration, and may impede the timing at which they come back until they can fix those nonconformities, and they may actually have to apply for variance if any of those nonconformities continue to exist upon review of the final site plan.
Your recommendation is we deal with it later, at the final?
Right, because I believe that engineering reviews and other things might change the structure that— yes, I believe that engineering reviews and other things might delay, sorry.
And then my second question, and going back in memory, this was approved in April. I wasn't here when it was approved. The first time we saw it, we had concerns about parking, traffic circulation, and traffic itself. So I never got an opportunity to really delve into sort of what was approved. But the thing that always bothers me about all of these dispensaries is parking, because even in ITEs, which is the professional organization responsible for this, they conclude that they only have a small sample size for dispensaries, and we, in fact, don't have any, you know, rules as it relates to dispensaries, and it makes me worry that we could be short of parking and not know it. Now, I have to commend the applicant about the layout they've drawn. I think it looks great. And when I'm looking at all three of these that we have tonight, you know, two of them don't concern me with parking, and this one does, but I don't—I can't say that we know enough to know that it should or should not be a concern.
Right, so I'll add that our current requirement for retail stores is one per 100. That is exorbitantly high compared to other communities. The standard is one for 250. So they're already exceeding that expectation, because one per 100 would leave them at 14 spots. One per—they're providing 20, so they're already providing six spots over the requirement, or, you know, almost—I can't do that math in my head. It's like a 50% increase effectively. So I would say that parking is not a personal concern of mine on this site, given what I know about parking standards in other municipalities and how it functions. But if it is a concern of yours, I urge you to ask the applicant about their experience operating other dispensaries and how that parking requirement has worked for them.
Fair enough. I, you know, I draw from a lot of years of watching a parking problem on this site, and that's what we talked about back in April, is it's been a problem, so you want to—you want to make it better. Thank you.
Anybody else? Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated October 6th from Community Development Director Harrington, report dated September 29th, 2022, from Planner Auerbach, and the memo dated October 4th, 2022, from Engineer Humphreys?
Move to acknowledge.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain. Abstain.
I have it. We will accept applicant or developer comments, limited to 10 minutes, if you'd like to come up and speak at the podium.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. How are you?
Hi. Katrina, are they looking at the older plans than what we've updated? Because we've actually updated the parking lot, and we have 29 parking spots with two additional handicap spots.
Was that—for the final site plan, or was that for the preliminary that you said?
The preliminary updated.
This still has 20 on it.
The one that we— That would have been too late anyways. So with preliminary site plans, we're trying to condense it, so it's a single submission. You take the comments, and then we go to the meeting, and then for final site plans, we have more of a back and forth with it, too, so that's probably part of the confusion as well. Right, you could answer that you have more ability. Sorry for the—
Okay, okay. Why don't you just speak to your comments and any comments you want to make about anything somebody's said, and I guess we'll go from there.
Very good, thank you. As it relates to the home, that is going to be demolished on the 19th. That'll be completely removed. As it relates to the city sidewalks, those are going to be replaced by us. Open to any other questions. The parking is going to be updated. Those plans will reflect 29 parking spots plus two handicap spots, so 31 in total. And just to give you an idea, the parking spots are going to align the border essentially of the—of the site. Creates more parking spots and a better flow.
The sidewalk repairs are going to be done contingent with the demolition of the house or shortly thereafter?
Sidewalks will be completed by next Friday.
Thank you.
Does anybody have questions for the applicant developer?
I guess I would just follow up the question I asked, Mr. Harrington, and that is, there's four existing nonconformities, so does the updated plan address all four and bring them into compliance, or are there any left over?
No, there should not be any left over. And if you'd like to address each individually, I can address them.
So we have driveway offsets both on same side of street and opposite side of the street. So has the driveway been relocated sufficiently?
The driveway will be relocated as one curb cut essentially, per M dot as well, per their recommendation.
And the other was the spacing from intersections. So I have a hard time thinking, you can move this thing 60 feet, that would be required to solve that, right? It's currently 237 feet, needs to be 300. Is there enough frontage to move that and accomplish it? It doesn't seem so to me, but I guess we'll see that in final.
I'll have to speak to our engineer about that question, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on the table to open the public hearing at 7:22 PM? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Public comments are welcome at this time.
I appreciate the petitioner coming in and saying it's going to replace the sidewalks, but, you know, you damaged them, you need to fix them immediately. People use those sidewalks. That's the only sidewalk that we have on that side of town, and it needs to be done immediately. Thank you.
If no additional comments, Madam Chair, I'd move to close the public hearing at 7:23?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. Comments, questions from Planning Commission members?
Yes.
I guess clarifying for you in terms of, we don't have the right plan in front of us right now.
So I would still say that—sorry, Katrina.
What was submitted looks like a final. What I received, it was your final site plan, right? So this is for—so this is the preliminary plan for the adult use. What he submitted two weeks ago was the final plan for the medical.
And adult use. Sorry.
Right, yeah, so that'll be for final, but what they're considering tonight is that preliminary.
So I would still say that if the preliminary site plan is something that you're comfortable with, especially with the applicant's proposed modifications to bring it—to provide more parking opportunities and potentially to address some more of these nonconformities, it's something you can still go ahead, and it's still my recommendation that you would go ahead and give it an approval, but it's ultimately your decision. But this is not an uncommon experience. We had a similar issue earlier this summer, or this summer, I guess, because it's not summer.
I guess for me, on this clarification of adding 10 more spaces on this and not understanding if all the setbacks and everything have been made properly, that was the concern that I had initially on the—on this site plan, the way it's presented here. So are all parking spaces going to be right up to the lot line, or is there a requirement that there needs to be a certain distance? I think there's supposed to be a certain setback.
There's going to be a three-foot setback around the property.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. With landscaping and the setback.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand, it'll be on the final site plan. I just wanted to make sure that we're comfortable with this plan and—
Right, and I just say part of the—yeah, part of the confusion in this process in general is that we have dual applicants for every site, or almost every site, and it's hard to keep track of, not only for the applicants, but for staff as well, so—but I think we're all looking at the correct plan for the preliminary one, and like I said, if it meets your standards of approval, I would encourage you to approve it, from my professional opinion.
Yes.
I totally get what you're saying. I really do, and I'm an efficiency guy, and I like to do things once instead of twice. But I wouldn't have supported the preliminary back in April had I been here, and so I can't jump over that to this promise of 29 spaces without seeing it, so I just can't get there.
And this is the preliminary site plan that was approved for medical in April, correct? This is the exact same plan or in May?
There might be minor modifications made between the two, because they were submitted at different times. I believe the one that you're looking at was submitted in May, so I would believe it would be pretty close.
Any additional questions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to recommend a city council approve, not approve, or approve with conditions. Anybody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, if I may, I apologize if I'm obtuse. For the first motion, are there—what are the conditions?
They're enumerated in my report, which I have to pull up.
They're underneath as well.
Oh, the same as—okay, all right. Well, gauging the temperature in the room correctly, and that's one of my—one of my jobs as mayor, it appears as though people might be a little bit more inclined to give this the thoughtful consideration it warrants for approval or recommendation to city council after a little bit more time and maybe seeing the plan that was referenced by the petitioner. Is that—that correct?
I would make a motion to postpone to the next meeting, till we have the additional information, if that's comfortable.
That motion would be in order, Mr. Gerbaugh, but you'd need to give the date certain.
If we want to postpone to a date certain, I'd give it more than two weeks.
Well, you can postpone to two weeks, and if it's not ready in two weeks, you can always postpone again. But either way, I'm not making the motion.
I didn't know if that information was available. You'd still need to review it and all that, so I'd make the motion postpone it for one month, due to the next meeting, second meeting, and—
So we have the first one in November, then the first one in December, or we can call this?
I think—Mr. Gerbaugh, I think if I may, I think it'd just be easier to postpone to the next meeting if it's not ready, then we postpone again, but it's your call.
I don't mean to disagree, but after some of our recent experiences with some of these plans, I would attempt to go with the first one in November. We can, you know, we can make a motion and just vote on it and see what the consensus of the planning commission is, but that's my two cents, is give it one more.
I'll make that motion. The first meeting, the first planning meeting in November.
What's the date? You gotta enumerate the date of the motion.
The 9th.
The 9th.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing this action until the November 9th meeting? Right, that's—the motion on the table is to postpone the—
Consideration.
—consideration until the November 9th meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries, this is postponed until November 9th. With that, we don't have to do the second motion on this. Okay, so there's a second motion that needs to be on the table. So I will move to postpone the application from—
Yep.
No? Oh, I can't. Oh, okay. Is there a motion to postpone the second?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
All right, postponed until November 9th. Action item number 22-25, application from Martin Stoneman of Compassionate Advisors LLC for a special land use in the C3 district from Appendix A, Article 4, Section 4.0413, B dot 13, for an adult-use marijuana retailer in a preliminary site plan remodeling the existing 1,760 square feet suite within the structure to create a retail space at 813 West Michigan Avenue, Saline, Michigan 48176, parcel number 18-18-01-325-016. We have a memo dated October 6th from Community Development Director Harrington.
So as you mentioned, 813 West Michigan Avenue, Suite Number 2, Action Item 22-25, Special Land Use Preliminary Site Plan for Compassionate Advisors LLC for an adult-use medical center, sorry, adult-use recreational center. It's hard to keep track of them all. So the location is on the south side of West Michigan Avenue and on the corner of River Oaks Boulevard, very close to the previous location, about 350 feet away, building the building. It's across the street from Baker's Nook and down the road from Mill Pond Park. It is zoned C3. The request is similar to the last applicant, is a special land use for adult-use marijuana retail, as well as a preliminary site plan for an adult-use marijuana retail. The current property is home to Village Party Store, as well as the Dance Alliance Studio. This particular applicant would be in between the two. It's a 1,760 square foot suite and a 9,360 square foot building. It was built in 1979. As I went over in the previous, here are the seven special land use requirements. I'll just leave it here for the public's edification, but I will not be reading through them again unless it was the request of the Planning Commission that I do so. So out of those seven, staff once again found that 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 were all met. The only question that Carlisle Wortman Associates, Planner Auerbach and I had, was to recommend carrying over the same conditions related to the parking that we had during the medical provisioning center, which are enumerated in my report as well, specifically to have that signed easement with the southern lot, if you recall. For the preliminary site plan requirements, once again, here are the ideas that we go over. It's a conceptual site plan, and final tweaks and changes should be saved for the final site plan. And if it will, okay. Can you go back like three slides, Ben? Thank you. Technical difficulties today. Perfect. One, no, we're good. I'm trying to go forward now. There we go. So at the staff review, the, sorry folks, somewhat comical now. So staff had comments on parking and loading. So as we discussed the previous lot at length, the lot directly to the south of this property was also historically part of the site plan, and the owners in the process of getting a shared parking and access agreement between the two lots to bring the parking into conformity with the city's requirement, or at least decrease the non-conformity that may exist. And next, for site access and circulation, the applicant should correct any parking lot discrepancies for the final site plan submitted. I did receive an email from the applicant a few days ago, essentially showing that they can, in fact, correct it, and that it is, and it will be corrected for the final site plan. The lighting, the applicant is leaving the lighting as is. And then the floor plan and elevation, the applicant should provide property scaled, the properly scaled floor plan, and note any elevations if they are changing. And once again, I believe that was in the email I received from the attorney, but that will be presented to you as part of the final site plan. So does my recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend approval of a special land use to the City Council, if the applicant sufficiently addresses the comments in her report, which is effectively committing to using the same conditions as used last time for the medical plan, as enumerated in the report. And it is also my recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the preliminary site plan for Compassionate Advisors, with the conditions also enumerated in my report. Thank you.
Is there anything that you'd like to add for the engineer's report?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memos dated October 6th from Community Development Director Harrington, report dated September 29th, 2022, from Planner Auerbach, and the memo dated October 4th from Engineer Humphreys.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Applicant, is there any questions from the planning, sorry, from the Planning Commission members or Director Harrington? No? Okay. I'd like the, if the applicant or developer comment, would like to make comments, they're limited to 10 minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, Attorney Sam Kilberg, on behalf of Compassionate Advisors LLC. We were before you here just a couple of weeks ago regarding the medical site. We had a long discussion about the preliminary site plan. It's the exact same site plan. We're just here asking for adult use. We're comfortable with the same conditions as we discussed last time, and so we're asking that you follow staff's recommendation of approval, and we're here if you have any more questions.
Would anybody like to make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:35? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. All public comments are welcome at this time, limited to three minutes per person.
Thank you, Janet Dillon. I just have one question, and it may have been addressed at a previous meeting, so I apologize. This is a different situation than some of our other dispensaries where this is, this is not owner occupied. So how is it addressed with these parking conditions? We've got an applicant versus a property owner. Where does that onus fall? And who's going to stay in compliance for it? I know right now currently that none of the parking spots in that lot, in that rear lot are striped. It's, it actually is a free-for-all back there. You really can't tell where you're supposed to be driving through. There's now another business back there, and have they been aware that their parking could be impacted by this? I just want to make sure, and that there's signage that shows. And lastly, will this mean that there will be no parking on River Oaks Boulevard? And will that be clearly signage? Will there be clear signage about that? Thank you.
Hi, Ben Goodman on the west side. I'm also a parent of a dancer that dances right next door. Parents there still have concerns. You know, there are kids that are dancing next door to this place. I hope you deny this tonight because what message are you sending your community and the kids? Parents move here for schools and for the great, great things we have here in Saline. We need to do something to stop this. There's too many of these coming into town. And you have a dance studio right there. What is protecting our kids if you open this up to recreational use? What is going to stop this from protecting our kids? All right? Parking there's a nightmare. I don't think even if you stripe that place, you're going to do it. The dance studio, we bring a lot of people there because it's the best dance studio in the area. All right? There's another business back there. This is just a bad call. Please listen to the people, Saline. Please listen to us on the west side. We're not being represented here at all. We got a damaged sidewalk, now we got another facility coming in over there. Do something for us. Show us that we're a part of this community.
If no additional public comments, Madam Chair, I'd move to close the public hearing at 7:37.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Any comments, questions from the Planning Commission members for either the applicant or for Director Harrington?
Perhaps Mr. Harrington could address some of Councilmember, or excuse me, Ms. Dillon's concerns.
I wish I had written them all down. So I believe one of the, so I know one of the conditions established to the medical site plan that I'm also recommending, and as well as Planner Auerbach, was for this, was to properly sign both lots to alert patrons of both establishments, whether it be on the lot directly south of them. I can't remember the address, 783 or 813, that there is a shared parking agreement between them. From glancing at, once again, that email that I was receiving from the applicant's attorney about the site, it showed striping on that southern lot, so I believe, on 783. So I believe that that lot will be striped. As for who's responsible between the applicant and the property owner, ultimately, the site plan and the conditions attached to that and the special land use are binding. So the city is ambivalent about who fulfills that obligation, who pays for that obligation. But if that obligation's not met, it would result in the applicant, the application, the special land use, and the site plan being revoked by the city. And it's actually a specific condition of this, that if, that any time that parking agreement between the two lots, 783 and 813, is terminated or changed, it would result in an immediate review and potential relocation of the special land use, as well as the site plan.
And the last item was regarding parking on River Oaks Boulevard, but I believe that would require a traffic order by the Chief of Police.
Right, I'd have to talk to the Chief of Police, as well as our city engineer and DPW, and perhaps our traffic analysis consultant, TIA. But I think it is possible, effectively, we could effectively make it a no parking zone if needed.
Any additional questions?
Maybe just a comment. It was alluded that there was perhaps a tenant down below at 783 that might be concerned about parking, and certainly it was stated that the dance studio would be concerned about this. And as understanding as I would be of both of those concerns, and you know, quite frankly, I would share those concerns, I don't think it's our role to be in that place. That's between landlord and tenant, and if tenants don't like their parking conditions, they'll have to take it up with their landlord. That's not something, when we see adequate parking, it's not something we can really, in my opinion, do a lot about.
I'm looking for a motion to recommend to City Council to approve, not approve, or approve with conditions. The application from Martin Stoneman of Compassionate Advisors LLC for a special land use in the C3 district from Appendix A, Article 4, Section 4.0413, B dot 13, for an adult-use marijuana retailer at 813 West Michigan Avenue, Saline, Michigan 48176, parcel number 18-18-01-325-016.
Let me just start the conversation, Madam Chair. I would move to approve with conditions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Stay by saying, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, if I could ask one recommendation, is one of the conditions, be that the remaining parking lot, or be, as you mentioned in the memo, the parking spaces be delineated, be lined, or whatever?
Striped.
Striped, thanks.
I have no objection to that.
That would be condition number 13?
Yep.
I believe it's noted in the application already, but put it as a condition makes sense.
Are we okay with your, the move?
Yeah.
And the second?
Yeah, to include a condition 13.
Yes, to include the condition 13 about striping the parking spaces. All those in favor? Stay by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. I'm looking for a second motion to approve, not approve, or approve with conditions. The application for the preliminary site plan for the remodeling of the existing 1,760 square foot suite within the structure, and that would include the 13th condition about striping the parking spaces? Would anybody like to move?
Move to approve with conditions.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Stay by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Onto the next, thank you very much. Onto the next item, item number 22-26, application from Stephen Gaboro of Leoni Wellness LLC for a special land use in the SPA 1 district from Appendix A, Article 11A, Section 11A. Dot 041 for an adult-use marijuana retailer on a preliminary site plan remodeling the existing 2,720 square foot building and adding 29 parking spaces to create a retail space at 660 East Michigan Avenue, Saline, Michigan 48176, parcel number 18-12-31-390-008. We'll start with a memo dated October 6th from Community Development Director Harrington.
Yep, so as you mentioned, Action Item 22-26, a special land use and preliminary site plan for an adult-use marijuana facility, retail facility, proposed by Leoni, Leoni, still not sure of the pronunciation, Wellness LLC, 660 East Michigan Avenue. Okay, well, once again, it seems like we're going to have fun here, so, okay, well, let's go back. All right, so the location is the south side of East Michigan Avenue. It's right across the street or near the Farisha plant, as you're probably the most familiar landmark near it. It's zoned in the SPA 1 district, which allows for residential, commercial, and industrial uses, I-1, I-2, I-4, C-1, 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 C-2, C-3, and then, I believe, all types of residential as well. So the request, as I mentioned, is a special land use for adult-use marijuana retail. You recommend approval to the city, approval or denial to the City Council, as well as a preliminary site plan. The current property is currently Zax Car Wash. It's a 1.13 acre lot, and it was built in 1987. These are the seven special land use requirements that I will leave up for a moment for the public certification, as well as yours. So out of the seven, once again, staff found that 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 were good. As for the second one, there were just some minor concerns over hours of operation, restrooms, and number of employees that should be answered by the applicant, and staff says none expect will come, will cause the SLU to be denied or not considered. This is the same conversation that we had at the medical site plan and SLU hearing as well. So the applicant has already addressed these points of consideration, and I would guess it would be approached, put on their final site plan, but I believe would be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding them. Here are the preliminary site plan requirements. Once again, you do the preliminary and then a final, or you could do it combined. All of our marijuana dispensaries have chosen to do the preliminary and then final. You can approve them with or without conditions, or deny the application based on the purposes, objectives, and requirements of the city and Saline ordinances. So the staff review, we had comments on parking and loading. There should be an alternative loading, a location should be proposed and meet the 10-foot setback. The site access, please see the, it's Carlisle Wortman comments and report. For safety paths, a path or walk from Michigan Avenue would be needed, or preferred landscaping, the updated landscape plan that identifies all natural features for the final site plan, as well as dumpster enclosure details for the final site plan. And then for lighting, we would like a full-size lighting plan. So going back to the recommendation, it is also my recommendation that this meets the requirements for the special land use, and that you should recommend approval to the City Council. And it also, I believe, meets the requirements to be approved for a preliminary site plan for Leoni Wellness LLC.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have the same question I had on the first application. We have two existing non-conformities, and it looks like we're sort of deferring to the applicant's evaluation as to whether or not they can solve those, and I'm just wondering, similar to what you said earlier, Mr. Harrington, would it not be required that they address them or seek a variance? Or do I misunderstand that?
Right, I might have misspoke earlier about the need for a variance depending on the type of non-conformity and whether or not they're fundamentally changing it to require that. So obviously, it's the city's preference to close the non-conformity if it's possible. But for, you know, the previous applicant, for example, you know, moving that drive, as you pointed out, might not be possible. I would need to consult further with Planner Auerbach about the specifics of that, because I'm still somewhat confused about the location due to that. I have to find what the specific non-conformities are, or refresh myself on what the specific non-conformities were with this property. So it was offset from adjacent drives and on opposite side and same side of the street, or I believe were the two that Planner Auerbach identified. That might not be possible due to the number of curb cuts created on Michigan Avenue. There might not be a way to create that at that specific site where it wouldn't be non-conforming, effectively, because MDOT standards have definitely changed over time, and as we're all aware, there are far too many curb cuts on East Michigan Avenue already. So it'd be a move to not further exacerbate the non-conformity and potentially bring it into compliance to the best of the applicant's ability.
I understand that, and I appreciate that, and I think just having that clarity would be helpful as we consider these things.
For sure.
Any other questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated October 6th, 2022, from Community Development Director Harrington, report dated September 29th, from Planner Auerbach, and the memo dated October 4th, from Engineer Humphreys.
Move to acknowledge.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All opposed? Eyes have it. Applicant developer comments, limited to 10 minutes, if you'd like to come up and address the deas.
Hello, my name is Ray Fumia. I'm here on behalf of Leoni Wellness. We submitted the same preliminary site plan as we did for medical, that you staff approved. Since we've received all comments, we are ready to submit a final site plan that has corrected any recommendations. The only thing we are waiting on is to hear back from MDOT, and that might... and that might answer your question. But everything that was pointed out in the Planning Commission's comments or the review has been corrected on our end, and we will submit that once we hear back from MDOT.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? I'm sorry. Nope. Is there a motion on the table to open the public hearing at 7:49 PM? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Public comment? I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing at 7:50 PM? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Comments, questions from Planning Commission members?
Mr. Harrington, could you clarify more about the 10-foot setback requirement? Because I'm looking at these preliminary drawings, and there's like a 20-yard setback, and then there's 10 yards. Where exactly is that playing out?
I have to look at that Planner Auerbach. So, I believe with loading zones, it has to be 10 feet off the property line, which is meant for general primacy and noise consideration, so.
It falls within the 20-yard setback requirement?
I would have to confirm that this... I'd have to confirm that Planner Auerbach.
I'm just trying to understand, is it the 10-foot from the back docklot nearby? And then, or is it 10 feet from the 20 feet further?
The SPA district is kind of wonky with some of its greenbelt requirements in addition to other requirements that it has. So, for your edification, not only do you have regular setbacks in the SPA district, but then you also have a required strip of green space required on all four sides of the property. The front, I believe, is 50 feet, and the sides and rear are additional 10 feet. And then, the Planner Auerbach have talked about, is that setback then from the greenbelt or is it from the property line? And that there's some general confusion over that because of how the code is written. But we will clarify that for the final site plan for sure.
Definitely, there's the parking lot, so I can look back to the line again, similar to my concern that I have with the other applicants. Thank you.
Just a comment. I'm getting hung up on these nonconformities because I think they're great opportunities to address something that's not quite right according to current standards or code or whatever. And I think for the future, we'd want to be more clear about whether or not what is being proposed on a preliminary basis is going to address the nonconformities. In this particular case, we're just playing catch-up between adult use and medical, so it sort of makes sense to me that it rides the same rail because if we're going to turn medical down, we're going to turn adult down in the final, regardless of the fact that we're approving the preliminary here today. So, I'm more comfortable with this one because it doesn't have any other issues, and it's just joining the other. But I think from a procedure standpoint in the future, if we've got nonconformities in a special land use petition, that we should really consider whether or not we can fix those clearly before preliminary as opposed to waiting for final.
For sure, and I think that that's quite well taken and definitely something we can do going forward. So, the nonconformities with this are the lot area, which unfortunately, the applicant's somewhat bound by the lot they purchased. And I don't think, because they're not fundamentally altering the size of the lot, that they would need a variance for that. In fact, they might actually have a variance depending on the age of the property. 1968 was their first edition of the zoning code, I believe, so, potentially. And then with the access ones, like I mentioned, we can do a better job of catching that. Traffic is not my area of planning expertise, so access management is a little bit of a learning curve for me, too.
It really comes down to almost a variance-like process that we would go through if a variance isn't needed, still to look at what is the opportunity to solve it, and is it reasonable to ask them to do that?
For sure.
Any additional questions or comments from Planning Commission? I am looking for a motion to recommend to City Council to approve, not approve, or approve with conditions the special land use in the SPA district for this property?
I'd move to approve with conditions.
I'll second. Any other discussion on this one? All those in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Looking for motion on the table to approve, not approve, or approve with conditions the preliminary site plan for this property?
I move to approve with conditions. Second?
It has been moved to approve with conditions the application from Stephen Jacobs of Leoni Wellness for a preliminary site plan remodeling the existing 2,720-square-foot building and adding 29 parking spaces to create a retail space at 660 East Michigan Avenue, Saline, Michigan 48176, parcel number 18-12-31-390-008 with the enumerated conditions 1 through 7. All those in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Discussion items, Mr. Beardsley?
Sure, I am the Planning Commission rep for both ZONI, Board of Appeals, and the Code Review Committee. My ZBA appointment, I think, expires at the end of this year, and Code Review is in for another year or two after that. But to be honest, I'm missing too many meetings to feel comfortable that I should continue with Code Review. And since I'm considering that, I'm just wondering whether it's time for somebody else to be the Planning Commission rep for ZBA. Between work and some travel, it's just becoming more of a calendar issue. So, I have to pick where I'm going to put my priority. And right now, I've got at least another year on Planning Commission, so I'd rather focus on that for 2023 as opposed to these other two. So, Mr. Mayor asked that I bring it up here and start a dialogue about perhaps replacing me on both of those two, ZBA and Code Review.
First, let me say that Mr. Beardsley has served with distinction on both entities, ZBA and Code Review, which started as a task force and then transitioned into a permanent committee. For ZBA, actually, you were my... Commissioner Heft was the previous Planning Commission rep to ZBA. When I became mayor, she decided to relinquish that position, and it was provided to you. So, you've actually served on ZBA for 10 years now. It's close to 10 years with Code Review. I can't recall whether we conceived that in the waning months of 2013 or 2014. Regardless, you've served this, this community and more specifically, this entity well, providing some planning expertise on both Code Review and ZBA. So, the bylaws of both entities require a Planning Commission rep. So, again, Mr. Beardsley and I discussed this at our last meeting. This is a perfect opportunity to begin a discussion, to have you all think about that. If you're interested in serving as the liaison to either entity, please, please come and approach me. Be happy to chat. Mr. Beardsley, perhaps you could answer a couple of questions. ZBA maybe has four or five meetings a year?
Yeah, it used to be less. I think it's been a little more active recently, but it's, it's once a month, and it's not very heavy-duty. Sort of fun because usually it's a homeowner in some sort of need, and you can evaluate whether or not you want to help them out in some logical way. And Code Review is typically a monthly meeting and much more active, much more, much more academic in the sense that you're really looking at either existing ordinances that need to be eliminated or updated, or you're creating new ones. And that's not as easy as it sounds.
Correct. So, Code Review is an advisory board to City Council who often takes the first stab at drafting and revising municipal ordinances. So, to Mr. Beardsley's point, generally speaking, there is a significant amount of prep time in advance of those meetings in terms of material that has to be reviewed, evaluated for discussion. So, I don't necessarily expect the same person to do, do both as, as Mr. Beardsley has done this past decade. I actually think there's probably some value in splitting it up, but if you're interested in the ZBA position or Code Review, please approach me because that appointment will need to be made around the first of the year.
I'm also the staff liaison of both, so you get to spend more time with me, which is exciting.
Any other discussion items tonight?
Ma'am Chair, if there's nothing further, I'd move to excuse the absence of our Chair, Dan Carroll.
Second? All those in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Anybody like to motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:00 PM?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.